Short notice. But, but again during the leadership meeting, we got those reassurances from the mayor.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming things are going to be in hand. You know, some of the neighborhoods that are close to the Capitol are a little like, you know, I get some concerns from constituents. Uh, but I, I, I think we'll be okay.
I'm, I guess you're talking about.
Potential demonstrations or whatever is happening.
I, I'm also hearing from people who are, who live right near the Capitol.
Right. And I was trying to get the chief in to, to ask, you know, have him brief us. Was unable to do that, but we did. It was a part of our uh, leadership conversation and the mayor assured us that uh, they were prepared, uh, and you know, working in conjunction with our, the federal agencies, the state police that they, they, they were ready and willing to, uh, protect our, our residents and our neighborhoods. So that, that did come up.
Thank you.
So, so, okay, just, uh, welcome. It's our Wednesday, uh, January thirteenth, uh, caucus meeting and, and work session. So I'll, I'll just, uh, jump right into, let's kind of get this off my screen, into the agenda. Okay. Under approval of, and this is the agenda for the 21st meeting. Uh, so folks don't forget that it's not a Monday meeting. It's a Thursday meeting. Uh, approval of minutes from the previous meeting. It's going to be the, uh, minutes from the January 4th meeting. Okay. Uh, and then moving on to consideration of local laws for introductions. That's local law A of 2021. It says.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty twenty, but it should be 2021. And actually on all the other documents relating to it, it says 2021. So that's uh, and that will be an introduction by Mr. Conti and it'll be a referral to, uh, council operations. Uh, Mr. Conti, you want to?
Yeah, uh, this is, this is a charter amendment. So it would, if it were to be adopted, it would have to go before the voters that adopted via referendum. Um, and what it does, it just provides that municipal elections, elections for city offices be done on a not, nonpartisan basis. As opposed to a political basis. Which is what, um, the majority of cities around the country do. Uh, and it, uh, you know, uh, I think it's something, uh, that's worthy of some discussion. It would, it would expand the electorate, uh, in a sense, because you'd be having elections in November rather than at a primary. Uh, but it would enfranchise in a sense more voters and it also recognizes that a lot of voters, especially younger people and others, uh, do not register in a political party and therefore they're really not enfranchised in a way to participate. And, uh, so that's what it would do. The whole petitioning process would be the same as for an independent candidate. Um, and that's how you would be placed on the ballot and be placed on the ballot in November. But it'll go, as I said, we'll go, go to committee. We'll have more further discussion in committee.
Right. Okay. That'll be going to council operations. So, uh, next, moving on to, uh, ordinances. The first one will be, uh, by Ms. Fahey, uh, authorizing, uh, the mayor to appoint Paige Barnum to the board of zoning appeals. Uh, it's two, 12 of 21. And that's, this is the, uh, oh, actually, you know what? I, we didn't do introductions. I didn't have JR call the role. I just kind of jumped right in.
I could do it real quick. Um, we have, um, council member, council member Kimbrough, um, council member Flynn, council member O'Brien, council member Fahey, council member Howie, council member Igo, council member Love, council member Ballerin, council member Frederick, council member Dosette, council member Johnson, council member Farrell and, um, President Ellis. Um, from staff, it's myself, Brett Williams, Daniel Gillespie and Michelle Andre.
Okay. Thank you. And so back.
If I can just, um, jump in, um, I've noted this, uh, to the leadership and to staff, um, that anytime we're discussing anything having to do with appointments to the planning board, um, I am recusing myself. So to the extent that uh, we need to, uh, cut me out of that, I can also walk away from my screen, but then it becomes hard for me to know when I should be back.
Is that the planning board?
This one's the.
Well, or just the zoning board, Judy?
Not the plan, not the planning board. I was talking about the, uh, the BZA. So when there was a discussion about.
Yeah. Cause you just said, I, I think you just said planning board.
Oh.
It's BZA, it's BZA.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification catching that, Richard.
Okay. And so it's for Paige Barnum. And this is something that, that we're, that we're doing to try to adjust the, the stagger years. Uh, Brett, do you want to say, uh, cause you, you crafted this.
Sure. Uh, I think as we all know, by this point, we've been trying to get the stagger back on track, uh, for the BZA for a while now. Stretching into last year. There are seven members on the, on the BZA. Ideally, they'd be staggered so that there's, um, two appointments, uh, over, that the appointments would take place over a three-year period. Two in one year, two in the second year, three in the third year. As it sits right now, I think we have one person whose term would expire in 2022. Um, and then in working with the mayor's office, and I think council member Conti arrived at a similar conclusion, we realized that Paige Barnum's seat got off track at some point. Not quite sure how. I think that probably predates many of us, but in any event, that one should be a 2022 expiration as well. Uh, the difficulty is that under the code, the mayor, uh, the language is something to the effect of the mayor shall appoint for a three-year term, which really doesn't leave a lot of leeway for the mayor to appoint for anything other than a three-year term. So, uh, in order to get everything back on track and to allow the mayor to appoint just for a two-year term in this single one-off instance, um, this ordinance will offer us her to do so.
Okay. And thank you, uh, for that, Brett. And there's, there's an accompanying resolution that also goes with this. We, we're looking to pass this, uh, intro and pass it. So it'll be, have to be by unanimous, unanimous consent on, at our Thursday meeting.
Right. And.
Have a hand up.
Go ahead, Howie, Mr. Howie.
Sure. Um, I thought at one point we had discussed that we'd like to get the, the, uh, BZA down to five members from seven. Will this interfere with that? Cause now we're into 2021. So, um, when, when is that cutoff? Will it be 2022 or?
Yeah. You know what? Uh, cause that's my ordinance, Tom, and I'm going to, I, I want to, uh, uh, rewrite, not rewrite it, but, uh, adjust it to reflect now all of these appointments. And get a sense as to who is not going to be continuing. I think there are three appointments, three members whose terms expire at the end of this year. Um, and I don't know if all of those members are going to, if the mayor wants to reappoint or not. But it, it does fit into, as vacancies occur, the vacancy is not filled uh, until the, the, uh, the board is reduced down to the five members. So, um, this language that basically provides that. And so I'm going to, I'll, I'll work with the planning department and, and you know, Brett, whatever, in terms of adjusting the language in the ordinance I previously introed to try to pass that this year. But that's still the goal is to bring it down to the five members.
Yeah, it makes sense. And I wonder if we could have it staggered. You know, um, like every year for five years, you've replaced one member, but it's something we can discuss in committee.
Yeah, I think it, it, that actually is what would happen that the, the terms then would be adjusted prospectively. Uh, like the planning board, you have one member coming up each year, uh, the same thing. You would have one member of the zoning board coming up each year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, for that, Richard. Uh, okay. So now moving on, ordinances introduced is three, 12, uh, 21. That's Mr. O'Briens. It'll be a referral to planning, uh, but Mr. O'Brien. You there?
Yeah, um, this issue came up, uh, in a decision of December 22nd by the, uh, planning board in which a project that they would have put on Calvin Avenue does not have one-third of landscaping, buffering and screening with vegetated material as, uh, required by the code. And the planning board simply jumped around that requirement by saying, we're going to put a green roof on these buildings, which I don't think was ever the intent of the zoning code as it was written. But to make it even clearer that a green roof is not, uh, landscaping, buffering and screening. Uh, I added a sentence to say that, uh, uh, green roofs do not qualify as, uh, screening, buffering and screening. Uh, I might also make a point too, that that same decision raised a very interesting issue. There's a road in and out of Wessel Hills Park, which we believe is dedicated to the park use. And in fact, although we couldn't come up with the original documents from the 1960s creating the park, we did come up with an application from 2006 that the city submitted to DEC to get some grant money for Wessel Hills Park cleanup. And in that application, the city submitted a map of Wessel Hills Park that included all of Anthony Street as part of the park. Uh, when this point has been raised to the planning director, um, because they basically discounted that Anthony Street was part of the park and granted this developer access to Anthony Street for his commercial project, which if Anthony Street is dedicated to the park, the planning board had no such authority to do that. And they were put on notice of that, but they went ahead anyway. Simply because when this issue was raised, uh, they simply turned to Dan Hirschberg, who said, Dan, what do you know about that? And Dan simply said, well, somebody from Parks told me 15 years ago that Anthony Street as part of the park ends at the dog park. And that was all the documentation he had was just that, uh, double or triple hearsay about somebody telling him that. Even though we believe that the map creates a presumption that the whole of Anthony Street is part of the park, as well as the fact that the monument is located right at Calvin Avenue at the entrance to Anthony Street. So, um, we have written to the planning director to advise him of what we think is the error of this decision. And I would also note, another interesting thing was I got the decision today and it has, uh, one of the members who, uh, was absent from the whole proceeding as voting yes in favor of the development. And another member who was there listed as absent. So, uh, some of this, I guess, can be attributed just to pure sloppiness. But I think some of it is bad policy that's being implemented from, uh, the top of the planning department and everybody just goes along with it. So this is an attempt to get at, um, some of what I think is a misinterpretation of our code in favor of giving developers a free hand. And that's as good a summary as I can give on it.
Right. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. And just, uh, when Mike says we sent the letter, he, he requested that leadership send the letter to, uh, Chris Spencer, uh, on, on behalf of this, this project and this issue. And we did, and, uh, we're awaiting a response at this point. Okay. So that is going to planning. Uh, next. Uh, moving on to resolutions introduced.
I think I had an ordinance.
Yes, you do. Twenty one ninety-two, twenty-three.
Oh, you know what? From the, uh, meeting, yes.
No, it's the, it's the, it's 15. It's the parking one. Keep going down. That one.
Yeah, it's one eleven twenty-one.
All right, we don't have.
Yeah, that's true.
One eleven twenty-one. Oh, right, right, right. And we were just, that's right. We were, uh, letting it age. That's correct.
Mr. Conti brought that up at the last.
Yeah, yeah. And we were letting it, yes. So, okay, that'll be a pass.
Right. And this just puts into code the existing boundaries. Um, also, um, I did, uh, reach out and, uh, had got some information from Assembly Member Fahey's office today. Uh, they have submitted the home rule bill that we had last year. They have resubmitted that. Um, they don't have a number yet, uh, but I'm expecting that we will have something back on that shortly, hopefully, and be able to look at the, uh, a home rule resolution on that. But that, that is in the, in the works and that bill has been submitted for reintroduction.
Thank you.
Good for that, Mitch.
Thank you.
Uh, Kelly, also item number 10 on the ordinance is held.
That one has to be, Mr. O'Brien, that needs a public hearing.
Oh, okay. And, and do we know when that's going to be scheduled? There, there isn't any hurry on that. If you, were, were you going to schedule that for the next meeting or for a supplement?
The February first meeting, if, um, uh, councilwoman Fahey's okay with the, um, public hearing notice.
That's, that's fine with me.
All right, here we go. Okay, so on to resolutions introduced. For, uh, resolutions, well, these are all Miss Fahey's and, and planning. So resolution five, 12 and six, 12, 21, uh, are reappointments to the planning board. Uh, there's a planning meeting, uh, coming up on the 19th. Where those will be, will be reviewed. So it's a referral to planning for those two. Uh, and the, the next three, uh, seven, 12, 21, eight, 12, 21 and nine, 12, 21 are reappointments to the BZA. Uh, and that also will be taken up at the planning meeting on the 19th.
I did not add the BZA.
Now.
Now, do they, you need to do that?
Oh, reappointments. Yeah, I remember. Okay, okay. All right. Passes on the.
Yeah, those were in December.
That, that's right. That's right. I was.
We had, they, we just reappointed them for two weeks of their terms. So they've only.
Yeah, I forgot that too. Right. To realign everything. Okay. So those seven through nine are passes. Five and six are going to, uh, planning. Uh, next, uh, on to number, uh, 10, 10, 12, 21 R by Mr. Flynn. Uh, you there, Jack?
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. Everybody's, yeah, if anybody's been to Labor Breakfast, they'll know that Hank is a staple and Leo's in the movement. So I felt we should recognize him.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That'll be a pass.
Want all members of sponsors?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Yes.
This is Jenny. Yes, please.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, you, were you, did you have something you were trying to?
I was going to actually, um, speak, uh, to it a little bit, but I'll, I'll just check my, um, emails.
Okay. All right. Uh, so I, and then the next, uh, resolution is, uh, one that I'm doing, it's 11, 12, 21. It'll be a pass. It's establishing the standard, uh, workdays. Um, oh, is this the Dorsey one?
Yes.
To, uh, for the chief auditor, excuse me. And that will be passed. So the rest of the resolutions are held. And so we're at the end of the agenda.
Oh, wait a minute. What about, um, I had put in a resolution of.
Oh, you know what? Uh, JR, you, you said you'd sent it out.
I just sent it literally right before the meeting or right in the very beginning. So council members check that and just let us know. Uh, if you want to be prime sponsors, it's regarding the, um, exit three mural, um, between the, um, tribal nation and the Department of, of Transportation. Um, apparently the Department of Transportation is not, I want to, I think the word, Mr. Howie can explain it. Go ahead.
Sure. And it's just basically, it seems like they're, uh, dragging their feet. There was an original agreement made back in 2017. Um, I put all the details in the, um, the resolutions. They can read it. Um, this is something you can Google. You just Google exit three and, uh, you put in tribal nation. And there's a bunch of, uh, newspaper stories about it. I did talk to the tribal chief, um, out in, uh, in Wisconsin, I believe that they're located now. Um, and you know, they offered them, oh, we'll give you, we'll build this for you. We'll do that. But, uh, like I said in the resolution, this is, you know, we have a long history in this country of ignoring treaties or agreements with the tribal nations. And I, I think it's time that somebody stands up and says, you know, this was agreed on. They paid for the murals. They're ready to go up. Um, let's just do what was agreed to. So that's basically it.
So this is an MC for, um, Thursday.
Tom. Tom Howie.
Joe, what's up?
Question for you. Uh, as I emailed you, did you get in touch with anybody from the state's position on it?
I asked you to, Joe. Um, I, I only have, there's only so many hours in a day, my friend. Um, and you know, if you feel that the state's right and you want to bring it up, I think that's a good offer to do.
I don't know. I'm not saying the state's right, but I'd like to know the position and why before we go jumping into some. Well, they're not in our municipality.
There is, well, number one.
Touching it. Stack's not touching it. Okay. You don't want to? That's all right.
Well, I didn't say I want to. I asked you to. You're retired. I, I'm working three jobs, my friend. Well, number one, the city owned that airport and it was, you know, Corning sold it off. I heard we should have hung on because there's a lot of revenue there. Um, you know, as a council, I, I think we should support it. Uh, there's enough newspaper articles about it. Department of Transportation isn't responding. It's, it's a bureaucracy, as you know, Joe. I mean, but that's as it is.
Right. So what I would say is.
Requested by anybody special or you just sort it out?
Um, I, like I said, I talked, when I, I talked to the nation, uh, the president of the nation and their cultural affairs, um, person. Um, when I brought up about the seal and they talked to me about it. So I had reached out to him about the, um, you know, changing our seal that has a Native American on it. And this came up during the conversation. And they said, anything we could do as a, you know, to help move this along would be very appreciated.
What did they feel about the steel?
I, they, they're still looking into it. Okay. Um, and I'm supposed to actually, I'm having a Zoom meeting tomorrow, um, with the, uh, the, the tribe. And I'll find out then what, 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 what their thoughts are.
Okay. So thank you. Uh, JR, put the, uh, the resolution together. It's going to be an MC for our meeting. So members will have a chance to review it. Please, please, uh, take a look at that. Uh, and decide if you want to sign on or not. That's probably the best way to do it at this point. Um, so we can, we can move forward. Um, otherwise that's, uh, that's the end of the agenda.
Yeah. And before you do, Kelly, I just want to go back because the council operations committee is meeting on Wednesday. And there are two resolutions on that agenda, depending on what happens may come up at our meeting on Thursday. Item 10 and 11, uh, 10 by council member Nani related to the flag discussion. And 11 by council member Love related to absentee ballots. So those will be both on Wednesday's committee agenda and, uh, depending on the committee action could come up uh, Thursday.
Right. That's correct.
Can I, can I speak on that? Cause I know the state just passed legislation about the speed of absentee. So I'm wondering if we need.
Yeah, the Senate passed, the governor, I believe, uh, referenced this as part of an electoral reform package in his statement. But the Senate, Senator Generis had a bill pending, uh, in, in order to be ahead of the curve, which we sometimes want to do also. Uh, they, the Senate passed a bill which does deal with, uh, speeding up the counting of absentee ballots. There's not an assembly companion. Um, and, uh, don't know what the governor's proposal will be. But that, that's likely to be probably the format, the structure of how they, uh, they might look at speeding up the count of absentee ballots.
Can that, can that.
And I'll be sending that bill out to, to, uh, to members also with some other information.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Kelly.
Yes, go.
Um, the planning committee meets on Tuesday. We have the re, the two reappointments, but also, um, we're going over the technical amendments to the USDO that proposed. And I just want to let everyone know, Michelle just sent out uh, links to a couple of, uh, drafts of, of the, of the technical amendments. Uh, one's a, a draft that's got, uh, majority of the, um, corrections. And then the other one is a clean copy, uh, for you to take a look at. And, um, there's been some confusion about uh, getting hard copies of this draft to everybody. Um, so, uh, I have requested that the committee members get hard copies. And, uh, I think, Richard, you wanted one. And if anybody else feels the need to, but take a look at them. These are the technical amendments, uh, for Monday. So there's a little bit of confusion here. I know everybody's very anxious to get a copy of the USDO. Michelle reminded me that, um, you know, this council's never received a copy. So we're trying to figure that all out and, uh, at what point we should, you know, have, have these bound copies made. So if you could just bear with us, but let me know if you, if you feel the need to have a hard copy of the two documents that are, um, the two draft documents there that I talked, spoke of.
Kathy.
Yeah.
I just picked up a package this afternoon from the clerk's office. It's about an inch and a half thick. I'm not sure what it is yet. I haven't looked at it.
Well, it's, uh, you know, actually Judy had requested a, a different document, Judy and Richard. And I was, you know, fine with that. Uh, they wanted the copy without the redlining. Um, and, uh, the copy that we received was with the redlining, you know, showing all the errors. And it's not a complete copy. I'm just going to say that there's, uh, some additional um, corrections that aren't on the copy. So there's a lot of confusion here. We're trying to get it straight. Um, and then plus the copy that went out was very hard to read because I, I started going through it myself.
No.
Uh, but it is available to you online and I, and at that link that Michelle just sent out today.
Are any of their intentions of doing this? Finalizing, uh, our, our one-year, six-month, uh, review. Now that's three.
Well, this is, this is the first step, the technical, uh, amendments and, and these are, um, um, renumbering and, uh, correcting typos and, uh, correcting the various citations.
For none of our concerns, correct?
But it's not the substantial, uh, amendments that we have been talking about for quite a while now. So we wanted to get through this part first, and then we will get to the, uh, the meteor issues. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get there.
But 11 months left, so maybe by then.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, I think if we tried to do all of that together, I think it would just really, you know, muddle everything up. So I, I think Tom, I know Tom had his hand up and maybe.
Yeah, but I want, I want to make sure Judy looks like she has her hand.
Yeah, I did. I saw.
I want to hear what she has to say about the changes because I thought she said there were more than minor changes. So, um, but. I want to hear what she has to say about the changes because I thought she said there were more than minor changes. So I'm glad.
Well, so I just want to clarify for people a a number of things. So the redline version that they made a hard copy of, which Richard and I specifically said, until we have it verified that they uh, until that's corrected to show all of the changes, it's really not a particularly helpful document. And um, Brad and Amy, I think we're a little surprised when we raised that, uh, that it wasn't um, a particularly um, you know, thorough redline copy. Uh, and so I provided Brad and Amy and and a few other people with my comments on where there are changes and there where there are changes that are not reflected in the redline version. And um, and in my doing that, it it turns out that it's really quite substantial. Uh, there are a lot of places where it's just not appropriately redlined. Uh, they've taken out old section citations without striking through, showing them and striking through. Um, there are places where it looks like a footnote is all new footnote. Um, when indeed it's only partially reworded. Um, for clarity's sake. Um, and then there are actually some substantive changes that they made like um, with regard to, I found one instance where there was a setback, a change in the setback requirements. Uh, when we were um, told that this is just correcting typographical errors and in section errors. I will say that one of my frustrations is this is now almost four years ago that um, I pointed out to them that there was an inconsistency and I didn't understand how it was going to line up with regard to the way they were numbering the document that we were receiving along with what had been in the code, number one. And number two, that there were um, a lot of typographical errors, et cetera, uh, in the prior document. It's very frustrating that we're not even to, they're basically saying we need to address those uh, before we can get to the substantive changes for the six month review. Um, so I I, you know, I've been taking a look at, I, you know, and I also I want to be clear, the the redline version is not what we can adopt because it's so filled with errors. So essentially, what we need to do is repeal and adopt the completely new version, which is what um, Richard and I were asking them for printout copies of. Um, and I thought that was going to be provided to the entire council. And and then the problem is, how do you really know what is being changed since we don't have a redline version?
He explained to you that he can't give you that because that's what you get from general code, correct? Is what they gave us.
That's right. And part of that is because of the process that they went through where they decided to do the numbering changes along with the substantive changes, which I personally didn't have a problem with. Um, but there, but I did catch some errors in the draft that was provided to the planning board uh, almost two years ago now, uh, and was uh, adopted by the planning board, uh, essentially eighteen months ago. They then decided to back out of that full document, the the numbers, uh, the the substantive changes. Um, and that had what general code then tried to do was to have somebody do that by eyeballing it and and doing the comparison, which is a Herculean task for a three hundred page document, which is then what essentially we need to be doing in order to understand where the changes have been made. Um, and and how do we essentially you know, proof a document anew? Uh, or or essentially do we just become a rubber stamp and just say, oh, this is what the administration gave us? Now we're just gonna go ahead and adopt it because we can't figure out where uh, those changes are uh, because of the task that's been left to us. So yes, it is what it is all that they can do with this point. But uh, it it it's very frustrating that this is where we are almost four years after the adoption of the code of the USDO.
Well, it it absolutely is frustrating, but we've got to decide whether or not we're gonna you know, stop dead in the water here or or move forward somehow. So we've got to come up with some kind of some kind of plan to move forward that people agree to. So as everyone can see, it's a little, it's a little controversial.
Is there any way that it could be broken up into parts and taken up by the committee and council a part at a time?
Well, Joe, I I mean, yeah, as far as the technical amendments.
To start with.
Yes, but you know, we only like you, you said earlier, we this council's gone in December and we have, we want to get to the substantial, the more the meteor issues too, and we're at risk of not getting there.
I got a quick question. Why wait for the planning board at this point? I mean, I I I guess I'm going, I'm gonna just go nuclear. I mean, why are we still waiting for the planning board? We have a court case that says we don't have to wait for them. So are we going to, if they had four years to get us this?
No, we're not waiting for the planning board.
So, you know, why don't we look at the document as we're looking at it now with fresh eyes? Look at it.
Well, that's, I think that's what Judy and Richard are talking about with this clean copy repeal and replace approach. So that's uh, one of the documents that was sent to the plant to everyone today. Uh, it's a document A. So that's the clean copy. So we can talk about that Monday as far as, you know, us splitting it up somehow and going through it.
So a lot of what we're talking about here is to reformat the whole code, the whole USDO so that it's consistent with general code. So that it can then be put into general code and it's available, which it isn't now. And that's part of the problem. And then once you get that done, then we can go and look at the other amendments, the more substantive amendments they want. But it's just, you know, it it what we adopted in twenty seventeen, the format was not consistent with general code and it's never been in general code.
I guess my naivety is saying, why can't we do both at the same time? You know, since, you know, we've given the planning department four years, bring us something. They haven't brought us nothing. Why why don't we look at the whole, we take it in pieces and look at the document again? And then maybe they'll come and talk to us about it if it was looking at making some actual changes. Uh, you know, at this point.
Well, I I think maybe we can discuss this Monday night.
Right, right, yeah. Tom, did you want to?
Yeah, well, we're we're talking Monday, not we're, you mean Thursday.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Tuesday. Sorry, Tuesday.
The meeting's Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. Monday is a holiday, right?
Yes. Um, I I think it's actually a much better idea for us to be able to deal with it in E code. Because one of the issues is looking at substantive changes in a, looking at the document that we have now versus, so moving the entire format, changing the format and looking at substance changes, it's going to be an absolute nightmare. So I actually advocated to the planning department to just switch it into E code, do no changes. I don't even care if there's grammatical errors. Leave it as is. Don't touch a darn thing and just move it into E code. So we don't have to go through it. The only thing that's changing is formatting and then we can look at changes. They wanted to do they wanted to do grammatical changes. But again, the concerns especially that we've had with planning is are these actually grammatical changes? You have to start, you know, then we still have to go through it instead of just changing it, the formatting. So we actually can look um, from one to the other and just look across the two documents as opposed to fishing through one from the other because the formatting is totally different. So I definitely recommend changing the formatting. So it's easier to look at those, especially the substantive changes between the two documents.
Guess my only fear is, and and I'm I'm just being very, and I'll be quiet after this. We've got five senior council members that have been here, you know, for that have a wealth of knowledge of how this got passed and and I just don't want to lose that institutional knowledge and 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 when we're going through this. Um, and you know, so and and to be honest, who knows how things may shake up uh, in general. Uh, but specifically, we have a lot of institutional knowledge that's leaving us. And um, I'm always afraid of uh, store tactics which will have real consequences uh, in the situation we're currently in. So those are my two cents. I've put it out there.
Agree. I think it's faster for us to do, to be able to compare like to like. So but I totally agree. I definitely do not want to lose um, the members that we'll be losing without going through it.
Go ahead, Judy.
So I, you know, clearly one option we can do is um, just go ahead and adopt it and then with renumbering and and like Ginny says, not care whether or not there's continues to be grammatical errors, et cetera. The 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 one concern that I have is to what extent are there substantive changes embedded in the document that have not been called to their to our attention? So it's being billed essentially as a as a renumbering. Um, you know, just a simple renumbering. But like I say, I found at least one thing that was a substantive change that I think should have been um, flagged for the council. I can under, and and frankly, I don't care how many substantive changes there are. It's just if you're making a change, it is something different than the renumbering and something different than the grammatical, then tell us about it. And I would really like, regardless of what course of action we take on, we recommend on Tuesday, I would really like the leadership and Kathy to ask Brad to go through the document and tell us that kind of thing. Because this was something when I brought it to his attention, he says, oh, well, yeah, I see your point. Um, and again, I said, you know, I don't care so much that you've made that particular decision. But then that is something that should be, in all fairness, flagged to the common council in addition. Um, and 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 that's where my biggest concern is with us not having a redline version, an inaccurate redline version. Um, and not being, you know, in in trying to pick out some of these kinds of issues. If we adopt it, we make the conversion essentially. Um, uh, you know, then to some extent, as we are going through you know, making substantive changes. Um, and I would like to know their timing for that, when they're going to come up with the substantive changes for us. Because after all, Kathy, you, I and Richard had a conversation almost a month ago now about how we were going to approach this and what we wanted a printed copy of. And Richard, do you have a printed copy yet of what you asked for? No. And it makes it very difficult for anybody to read this online. You know, you know, on a computer and make sense of it. You know, and that and that is, you know, that's an issue in general.
Well, I would encourage, you know, if you have strong feelings about it, to please come to my to Tuesday night's meeting. And voice your opinion. We'll talk about this a little in a little more depth. Because the planning department will be there.
Is it? Is it possible, though, that in the meantime, we ask Brad to let us know what is above and beyond just renumbering changes and clear typographical errors where he's actually amending things, whether it's for consistency or not?
You're you're saying to 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 have him pull out the the issues that might be more substantive?
Yeah.
In addition to some of the other major issues, what, to go through it again and like the, I don't know what you mean, Judy. He's got a list of things, but
But I think
You're saying there's more in there.
Yeah, he changed. I think her point is that he changed some some other things beyond just the numbering. Is that correct, Judy?
Yes.
And and so if we go ahead and do this change in numbering and we're not working off of that very first uh, version of it, then whatever changes he made are going to be buried once, once we adopt it. So we need to to get with him or have a conversation with him about going back and and to the original version. I
You know, he might be uh, planning to review that on Tuesday night, but I I'll bring that up to him.
And assuming he can remember what changes he made. I mean, it's a huge document. And if you're tooling around in it, you, I mean, it could be some stuff that, you know, um, he missed, you know. So I
You know, and I I just one person's idea of what is a substantive change is different from another's too. So but I'll I'll bring it up to him.
Right, okay, Tom?
Yeah, and you know, my concern numbering is is one thing, but when we start changing words and that's what our job is, is to develop wording for laws, when you start changing words, you can affect the the legal meaning. So I'm very, very concerned. I'd like to know, and my, I guess I have a question. If they are changing words, don't we get to see the old and then the new um, before we vote on it? That makes sense to me.
And and what he would say is that you have the redline version that shows a majority of those changes.
But not all, just the majority?
Uh, no, there's been some that have been made since then that general code didn't uh, pick up on, I guess.
Yeah, that that's why Judy is suggesting that instead of trying to adopt a redline version, which would be, you know, ordinarily, you know, a strike and insert new language, that we do, we we just repeal the entire USDO and adopt the the finalized version without the need to go through a strike and repeat, strike and insert type thing. But we have to be comfortable that the document we are adopting is what it is in terms of technical changes and not substantive policy. And then once you have that, then we can get on to the policy issues that we've been holding off on.
But Tom, I put in a request for the hard copy of the um, you know, the uh, the clean document without the red lines for committee members and you, Richard, as well, because you've been involved. But I haven't heard back and I asked for it uh, by tomorrow. So we're, you know, it's very short notice, unfortunately.
Well, okay. I mean, I I won't move without a committee then if I won't vote for it to go out unless we know exactly what we're voting on. I mean, this is the problem that happened originally, that there was a lot of pressure put on the council. And I wasn't here. This is hearsay on my part. But I heard it was like kind of forced, well, the council's ending, we need to get this through and let's just pass it.
Well, you know, I'll talk to you. Um, I'm happy to talk to you again about that because I have another opinion about that.
Okay, and everybody has an opinion.
Right, and so so
Kelly, God, can I say something?
Yes.
I've been listening about this document for three years. I agree with Tom. Every time, every time it comes up, people start cutting us off. Like, I heard what was said when we first came on, it was said that the document was rushed through through the last um, council. And this council has yet to put their physical eyes on it. And um, it it just seems like that's what the um, the the residents were complaining about about the USDO. We should be, it it doesn't take three years to produce something. And every time people um, make mention of it, they get overtalked. And it's just not fair. It's not right. And it just makes people feel like something is not um, natural about it. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay.
I apologize if you think I was the one who was over talking there because I, that was not my intention.
Right. So I I'd like to move on because I I we're gonna do a quick executive session. So um, but Judy, after you, we're gonna do executive session. Right, so I, I'd like to move on because I, I, we're gonna do a quick, uh, executive session. So, uh, but Judy, after you, we're, we're gonna do executive session.
Okay, I, I take issue sometimes when the comment is made that what one person thinks is substantive or what one person's, you know, reading of the law is, uh, you know, can be different than another's persons. So with regard to what I'm talking about as being a substantive change, Brad essentially has acknowledged that he has changed in some places the setback number, the actual number being used, the number of feet in some places. There was an inconsistency. He picked up on the inconsistency. He is the person then making the decision as to which number we're now going to use. It, it shouldn't be program staff that is doing that without alerting the council members.
Okay, but that was one instance, Judy. Let's, let's save this conversation to.
Can I say, he, he acknowledged another one. I identified in a forty-five minute review, one. He acknowledged another one. We haven't gone through the whole thing, Kathy. So what, you know, my point is whatever there is like that, he should be letting us know. That's my position. And so it, and it is substantive. And I am somewhat insulted that my comment is being dismissed because it may not be, somebody else might have a difference of opinion as to whether or not that's substantive. When you're picking one number over another in the document, um, that is a, a substantive change.
Okay, and with that, we'll, we'll save the, the rest of the conversation for Tuesday's planning committee meeting. Like to make a motion to, uh, go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Second?
Second by Mr. Holly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. JR, take us out.
People sixty-five and older, people sixty-five and older being eligible to receive the vaccine. I had the best luck with the assistance of my tech savvy daughter, getting me scheduled on January thirty-first at the Suniti testing site.
Oh, that's soon.
Uh, but I gotta tell you that the first day, because I'm seventy-five, so I, Monday, I knew I was eligible. And the first day was sheer chaos. I couldn't get through to anything, websites, whatever. But by the second day, I was able to get, first of all, they were gonna schedule me in March. My daughter came in and kept plugging at the system and they got me in on January thirty-first.
So for, for those of you that are watching on Facebook, we are back out of our executive session where we discussed, uh, uh, pending litigation matter. Thank you. So, uh, anyone have anything else? Any questions or comments? If not, I'd make the motion that we, uh, close out the meeting.
Can I, can I say one thing before we adjourn? JR, great work, JR.
Yes.
And whoever else worked on that.
Yes, fantastic.
JR, yes. Okay, okay, all right.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Will you adjourn?
Yes.
Our meeting is when? Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday.
That's what I thought. I thought someone said.
Well, the planning meeting on Tuesday.
We have the task force tomorrow, the first meeting, the task force, but that's not a council meeting.
Thank you.